And public comment. If you would like to address the board on any topic, I ask that you please do so from the podium. State your name and address so that people at home can hear and see what you have to say. But before we get to public comment, we're going to have an update on the water reclamation district Salt Creek Intercepter Project by Public Works Director Bailey.
It was first proposed for lining project about five years ago. It was subsequently postponed for a while by the MWRD and then restarted. In fact, if you certainly encountered barricades and traffic types and so on and so forth, that was the first project north of Roosevelt Road. It's now going into phase two and that will be affecting Riverside directly. A couple of things about it is that this project, like I said, it's an 80-year-old structure, seven-foot diameter pipe. The MWRD is lining it to increase its integrity or improve its integrity and increase its life. It's a good thing they're doing. Certainly Riverside is very dependent upon it because virtually all of the village's wastewater enters this intercepting sewer. This is the project. This is the start of the project in phase two. That's where we're in right now, what we're really talking about. This is the Loyola Hospital. That's one of the places this project is starting. The second place is right here. That's the Forest Avenue, First Avenue intersection. This is really where this intercepting sewer enters the Village of Riverside. Then it goes down Forest Avenue, takes a right when it gets down to Long Common, underneath railroad tracks, down Riverside Road, and exits Riverside near Miller Woods, near Ogden Avenue, on the wastewater's way to the Stickney Wastewater Treatment Plant. This project is up north here. When we first started hearing about this project, they were going to line it and that's when they would pull this liner into the section of the pipe, fill it with hot water, and it would cure in place for a number of days, I think at least a week or so. That is still the type of project they're going to do on First Avenue. And this is First Avenue. This project, this interceptor follows First Avenue south to Forest Avenue intersection. One change from when we were first hearing about this in the past is when this project starts in Riverside, MWRD is actually going to coat it, coat the inside by hand. They'll have people right down inside the interceptor. They're first going to clean it, then repair it, do any repairs that are necessary, then actually spray a cementous-type material on the inside of it, maybe by hand and maybe by some type of machine. But that is one of the major differences between what we first heard about and now. Kenny Construction Company has been awarded this project. It's a $44 million project and it's a significant project. Very complicated, very, very weather-dependent. As you can imagine, it's taking in all this water. If this, we have a real stretch of raining weather, the project is probably going to be suspended until, you know, the water subsides so that they can get back into the pipe. There, you know, again, there's actually going to be people into the pipe in Riverside. This, both of these projects, both these projects' location start April 1st. The only issue I understand that is kind of up in the air a bit is Kenny Construction is waiting for a permit from IDOT. It's kind of a common theme, I guess, that things wait on IDOT, but they certainly have jurisdiction over First Avenue. I made a list of a few things that I think will directly affect Riverside. The project is estimated to take 1.5 years. Like I said, it's very weather-sensitive. It's planned right now to start April 1st and end on Thanksgiving, be suspended basically for the winter. I believe if we have a mild winter like we had this past winter, they're likely to keep working and that's a good thing because the sooner this project is over, I think everybody's going to be happier. Starts at the intersection of First Avenue and Forest Avenue. That intersection is certainly going to be obstructed to varying degrees throughout the course of the project. There's a major sewer bypass at that location. I'll show you a slide in a little bit, but they're actually going to pump water, the wastewater from the intercepting sewer north of that intersection, basically across Forest Avenue to the MWRD infrastructure on southeast part of that intersection. The westbound right turn lane on Forest Avenue will be obstructed almost through the entire project. It could be that if the project is suspended for a while, they'll remove the obstructions from that, but that will become a two-lane, two-way street again. Pedestrians, especially schoolchildren, are going to be diverted to the south side of Forest Avenue. That's similar to the case when that intersection was being overhauled. And the project is really going to be noticeable, I guess, or most noticeable to people by these pumps and other equipment that are going to be located near a manhole. They're going to work every thousand feet from, you know, from one manhole to the next. And the footprint of this equipment is estimated to be about 110 feet long. It's going to have, well, varying types of equipment in it, maybe supplies stacked in it. I think that's probably going to vary depending upon the course of the project. It might get a little bit larger, it might get a little bit smaller. Certainly it's going to cause traffic constrictions. There's going to be detours at times. It's going to generate noise and certainly it's a sewer project and we would be naive to think that there's not going to be some sewer smell generated at times. This is a, it's not the best copy, but it's a photograph, aerial photograph of the First and Forest intersection. You can barely see, pardon me, you can barely see the blue outline here, but this is really the footprint on this intersection. RB High School is right here. There's some pumps located here and then pumps again over here, pumps and generators. And basically what they're doing is transferring this wastewater that comes down the interceptor from the north across First Avenue and then it's coming to the south across Forest Avenue, underground. The area's going to be fenced in and that's a big part of the reason the pedestrians, they use that sidewalk, are going to be diverted to the south side. They'll come along here, go across the street and then go back north. And we'll see, another graphic I have shows, I think will show the actual obstruction of that right turn lane a little bit better. This is, all of these graphics are provided by Kenny Construction, by the way. This is the footprint that I was mentioning about that will be stationed throughout the village from time to time. Again, it's going to be moving, but this is 110. This right here says it's 110 feet. You can see a semi, roughly a semi-trailer truck right here. There are supplies within that footprint and you can, you know, you can see this other profile of the structure here. So that gathering of equipment will be stationed on the side of the road, wherever they're located, for a period of time. When they're done in that particular area, it will move down to the next spot and be located there for a while until they're done in that area. This is the, one of the plans and this is, this is the intersection of First and Forest here. This is Forest Avenue. You can see this cross-hatched area. This is where this right turn lane is disappearing. The pumps that I was mentioning are located up in here and the company projects that they will be working from this area for 71 days. That's starting April 1st. So that's how long this project will sit there. Again, they'll be cleaning, patching, lining the sewer main. The next stop is down further east on Forest Avenue. That's, this is between Groveland and Lincoln. This area here, they're projecting 69 days where they will be located. And again, these time periods are very weather-dependent. If we have a dry stretch of weather, they'll probably move faster. There's, in their scheduling, they have a lot of, you can see the times devoted to maybe just compensating for weather. So it could be, I think it's more a maximum of 71 days and if we have dry weather, it's probably going to go faster than that. This is the intersection. This is Forest Avenue, this is Woodside, and this is Long Common. Here's the railroad tracks here. You can't see it very well. I think there's another location right here where they might be located. One of the things that they're also going to be doing as part of this project is rehabbing manholes. Typical project like this, whether the village did it or MWRD, as you encounter manholes that are deteriorated, they are rehabbed. So following the course of the interceptor, moving down Forest Avenue, this is the intersection with Long Common, underneath the railroad tracks. And then this is, this is Riverside Road right here. Village Hall is in this area right here. There's a manhole right here. This is in front of the fire hall. There's a note up here saying that the contractor has to coordinate with the Riverside Fire Department regarding, you know, access to the fire hall. And then you can see right along here, this is another staging area where they're going to have this equipment footprint and then they'll proceed down Riverside Road. So that's, that's really the project that I really focused on, the impact to residents. Again, it's, there's going to be equipment parked on the street, there's going to be traffic disruptions. I have notified Kenny Construction and MWRD on a number of occasions, as recently as this past Tuesday. Even today, I had occasion to meet with somebody from Kenny Construction and reminded them about the Streetscape project, this resurfacing of East Quincy and Long Common. On Tuesday, I gave them another copy of the village events for the year, the Riverside Arts Weekend, July 3rd and 4th, Ravinia, so on and so forth. And those are mostly weekend events, they don't expect any conflict with those events. Kenny Construction has a very good reputation, very experienced in this type of work. The project that they did up in, you know, north of Roosevelt Road last year, very, very similar to this. There's a lot of conflicts and a lot of stressors involved in the project, so they're used to dealing with those types of things. I had occasion to meet briefly in the field with Christopher Burks, construction engineer, associate with the Streetscape project. It was really an unrelated meeting, but I made mention of this sewer interceptor lining project beginning April 1st and Kenny Construction is a contractor and Scott said, "Man, that's a really good company." So I'm optimistic that, well, I know it's going to be tough going for residents throughout the year, but we have a lot of goodwill built up already as far as everybody coordinating and cooperating, understanding that there might be conflicts that will have to be resolved. And, you know, I think we're really poised to be able to respond to issues. There's no doubt there's going to be inconveniences and some unpleasant trees or whatever, but that's, you know, that's part of progress and like I mentioned, this sewer interceptor is vital to the Village of Riverside. All of our wastewater goes into it and it's taking wastewater from well north of us. So the integrity of that wastewater sewer interceptor is very important and this project will certainly improve the integrity, improve the lifespan of it.
Questions for Mr. Bailey? Yes, sir.
Is this impacting the school crossing at First Avenue and are we doing anything out of the ordinary to accommodate any impacts?
What we're doing differently is the same thing that we did last year when this intersection was overhauled, you know, the new traffic signals and whatnot. And as you recall, that intersection overhaul was actually delayed while there was a shaft dropped down into, through First Avenue. That was Kenny Construction and that was a precursor to this project. But anyway, last year, we diverted pedestrians to the south side of Forest Avenue, just east of the Forest Avenue Bridge, and then they walked down the south side of Forest Avenue and crossed over. They went further west on Ridgewood than they will have to this year. You know, they kind of crossed beyond the actual intersection. This year, we're going to divert them at Groveland, just like we did before. They'll actually be able to use those crosswalks that you could see in that one aerial photograph. So it's going to be different, but, you know, we had, there was a pre-construction meeting a month or more ago at the MWRD facility in Stickney and RB High School's operations, field operations person was there. And I've since been in contact with him and assuring him that, or reminding him that this was underway. Lieutenant Gutcheck is really, I view him as the person most in charge of school traffic and that kind of stuff and I, we're set to make the changes.
I have one. I know you say it's going to improve the integrity and the longevity of it. Will it have anything to do with the efficiency of the system?
I don't think so. I think this is purely structural integrity, improving the longevity of it. I assume that MWRD has televised at least portions of this intercepting sewer and has had determined that it was due for something. And this lining these days, you know, it's just a matter of scale. This is a seven-foot diameter intercepting sewer when it passes through Riverside, but that's something that we did last year with these water mains that, much smaller diameter that are placed under Forest, I mean, Displains River. We lined them for the same purpose to increase their, improve their integrity, increase their durability.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
You're welcome. If you ever have any questions, you know, we all know that we have to be kind of on top of this and responsive and like I say, that's what is going to be the key is communication and cooperation and everybody's poised for that.
Sounds like you've been doing a great job on that already, coordinating with them and letting them know about our upcoming events and the other work that's going on. So I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Next up is public comment. Would anyone like to address the board this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Mary Judy and I live at 270 Northwood Road. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Olmsted Society. I'm a board member with the Olmsted Society and we just would like to update you on a monthly basis to the happenings going on that we're involved with here in the village and our cooperative efforts in keeping this a beautiful place to live. So to begin with, everything I'm saying tonight is available through the website, olmsteadsociety.org. So anything you'd like to check up on, go ahead and check that out. You can find context to all of our board members, our calendars, and any information that you're looking for. You can also like us on Facebook, I have to say that one. And we've really done a great job, particularly in the last couple of years, of keeping the goings-on of Riverside in the forefront. And we've got hundreds of followers on the site and it's a great promotional for the village as well. So, so to begin with, the beginning of this year, Friday, January 22nd, at the public library, the Olmsted Society hosted their annual meeting. As a highlight of the evening, Peter, I'm not going to say his name right, I'm so sorry, Peter Bootsikakis of Riverside Foods was honored with the Olmsted Spirit Award for his leadership in the Olmsted Society Education and Design Program's Hop Stop. The Hop Stop was a collaborative program educating the community on local foods, plants, and beverages, including the Hop Stop Craft Beer Festival in the Landmark Riverside Train Station. Peter was the driving force behind the Hop Stop and his vision and contacts in the craft brewing community were essential to the success of the event. Peter coordinated a home brewing demonstration using hops grown in Riverside by Joe DeVorek and Riverside Elderberry. The resulting brew was served at the Riverside Holiday Stroll and proved that Peter knows what he's doing and that Riverside has really good soil. The Olmsted Society raised funds via ticket sales combined with donated or reduced prices on goods and services. And we have our site set on September 17th for the next upcoming Hop Stop. And those that are interested in volunteering to assist with the Hop Stop should contact Olmsted President Rob Dixon or Peter at Riverside Foods or Board Member Tom Guardi or check on our website for more information. Just last evening, the Olmsted Society hosted a beekeeping lecture at the library. Marson Metelski is the head beekeeper at the Garfield Park Conservatory and he gave a lecture on why and how of beekeeping. He shared examples from his own experience to illustrate the practical realities involved in beekeeping in Chicago and the suburbs. About 40 to 45 attendees came to the lecture and it was filmed by the Cable Commission for later broadcast. Lots of good questions and information were presented on this sustainable endeavor. In 2016, the Olmsted Society is continuing our tradition of teaming up with the Village of Riverside to help beautify our green spaces. Frederick Lot Olmsted designed the parks in Riverside to provide changing vistas for both pedestrians and vehicles. His plan can better be realized by reducing shrub overgrowth, eliminating weeds, and opening up the river view. All are invited to join us as we tame and then maintain your public parks in Riverside on Saturday mornings from 9:00 a.m. to noon. The first workday of the year is this Saturday at Swan Pond and a full calendar of monthly workdays is available on our website. The Olmsted Society's Reflections on Riverside program is now accepting entries. The program encourages area students to reflect upon Riverside's landmark landscape and natural areas and to express their impressions creatively. The poetry contest seeks poems of any style or length in keeping with our theme and is open to students in grades one through eight. $50 will be awarded to the first-place junior high winner and $25 will be awarded to each first-place winner in grades one through five. The imagery contest, which is open to high school students, seeks entries that reflect upon Riverside's landmark characteristics. $100 will be awarded to the first-place winner and $25 to the second-place winner in each division. In addition to the aforementioned prizes, the Riverside Public Library will be awarding honors for the most nature-themed poems at a special ceremony to be held at the Brookfield Zoo this summer. Entries are due April 30th and detailed entry forms and instructions can be found on our website. The Olmsted Society is pleased to continue offering great opportunities to learn about our historic landmark village through our village tours. Discover the winding roads, delightful parks, beautiful landscapes, varied architectures on the tours guided by our local historians. The North Tour covers the area north of the railroad tracks and features the Long Common and architecturally significant school, a place of worship designed by Jenny, and homes by Silsby, Wright, Perkins, and Purcell in Elmsley. The South Tour includes Swan Pond Park, Scottswood Common, Wright's Country Estate and Service Buildings, architecture by Jenny Drummond, Kenny and Vinci, Whittlesley, and a home designed by Olmsted's partner, Calvert-Bow. The tour schedule and tickets are available on our website. Those are all of our current past and upcoming events and if you are interested in joining the Olmsted Society or perhaps renewing a membership that has lapsed, membership is available on the membership tab of our website and you can sign up there. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Before you leave, the bee thing last night?
Yes.
It will be up on the Riverside TV YouTube channel within probably 12 hours.
Wonderful.
And it also could be seen on Cable Channel 6 as well as U-verse Channel 99.
Okay.
And if you want to stop at the gentleman around the corner, they could probably give you a link you could put on the Olmsted so you could just click right on it and see it.
I'll do that. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mary. We appreciate everything that PLOS does in town. It was, it was a really good lecture last night. I really enjoyed it. I learned a lot about bees that I never knew. Anyone else like to address the board? Moving on to reports of village officers. First up is my report, just a couple of things. First, I'd like to thank everyone who came out last Friday and Saturday to help Riverside Springs Ahead rescue the plants on Burlington Street. Terry Clodan organized the event and we literally moved hundreds, if not more than hundreds of plants off of Burlington and relocated them at various locations around the village. So those nice, now almost eight-year-old perennials, we were able to save for the village and put them in other locations. So thank you, everyone who came out. And a special thank you to our Public Works Department. Our esteemed director was out Saturday morning with shovel in hand, helping us move plants. And so it's that kind of cooperation between our staff and our residents that just kind of tells you what kind of place Riverside is. So it was a great thing. The other thing I want to alert people on, and there'll be more information about this to come as soon as we finalize all the details, but on April 6th, you probably already know that the WTTW is doing a show called 10 Towns That Changed America and Riverside is honored to have been chosen as one of those towns. The show premieres on April 19th. That's when it will be shown live all across the nation. And our three restaurants in town, The Choo Choo, 34 East, and Molly's have all agreed to be showing it that evening for residents if you'd like to come out and have a communal experience. That's April 19th. On April 6th, however, Dan Andries, the producer of the show, and Jeffrey Baer, the host of the show, will be coming back to Riverside to host a pre-screening of the show. We don't yet know whether they're just going to be showing the Riverside section or whether they're going to actually be bringing the whole show with them, but it's going to be at 7 o'clock in the auditorium here in Township Hall. That's April 6th with Dan Andries and Jeffrey Baer. So we're very honored that Dan and Jeffrey are making their second trip out to Riverside to share their expertise and some stories about how the show was made. So that's going to be a lot of fun come April 6th. Like I say, more details will follow as soon as we get the details from Dan and Jeffrey. And that is, that is all I have. Manager Francis?
I have a few. I just wanted to provide the village board and residents an update. The village has issued a request for proposal for website redesign and development services. The proposals are due April 11th and staff anticipates bringing a recommendation back to the village board in May. Also, in February, the village issued a request for qualifications for a traffic safety study. Staff has received 11 responses. A panel has been assembled to evaluate the qualifications. This panel includes our Safe Environment Chairperson, Marty Meagan. Trustee Lomston has offered to sit on the panel as well in addition to some village executive staff. So staff anticipates bringing a recommendation on that particular project as well back to the village board. And that will be recommendation with regard to who the traffic engineering firm should be. Additionally, the village applied for a grant through the West Suburban Mass Transit District to fund the replacement of the hand railing system and for platform restoration, which includes repairing of concrete support bases for our steel beams, resetting the pavers and correcting uneven concrete platform. Last night, I attended the West Suburban Mass Transit District meeting to present the village's grant request and I'm pleased to announce the village received our entire grant request, which was $235,000. I want to thank the West Suburban Mass Transit District I want to thank the West Suburban Mass Transit District, and additionally, the West Suburban Mass Transit District trustee and Riverside resident Jason Johns for his guidance and assistance throughout this process, because he did play an instrumental role in this. And that is all I have.
And just following up on that, she's modest as usual, that's an extraordinary accomplishment that our staff and Mr. Johns just made on behalf of our village, $235,000. That brings a total grant funding that we have received to support our renovation of the train station to just shy of $1 million. And that's a direct result of the vigorous efforts of our staff, so congratulations, and thank you for that excellent work. Is that it?
That is it.
Any questions for Ms. Francis? Okay, moving on, next up is the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items anyone needs to be removed for discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion of the second to approve. Motion by Ms. Sedevy. Second by Ms. Collins, please call the roll.
Trustee Bailey.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Trustee Lomston.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Sedevy.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up are reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons. Are there any liaison reports?
I read them.
No. Ms. Collins?
I just had a couple things I wanted to read for the Economic Development Commission. I am the liaison for that committee, and they are going to be hosting an event on Tuesday night at the Riverside Town Hall at 7:00 p.m. This will be a panel presentation on video gaming, and it will involve several speakers who will be giving information. This is basically an information session. It is not a discussion where we're going to have people from the audience speaking, but they will be allowed to give questions that will be answered. This will also be televised live that night. How will that be televised live?
It won't be televised live, but it will be taped for rebroadcast within, usually within 48 hours, and it will be on cable.
It is being televised live.
It is being televised live.
I don't want to refer to him anymore, so anyway, it's being televised live.
Breaking news.
That's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure. So if you can't come for it, please watch it on TV, and it will also be rebroadcast after that, so that people can see it then. This is involving the gaming issue that we have been talking about, and the EDC wanted to take a step back and provide some education to people so that they could make a more informed decision as to what they think about the gaming issue. They are having three experts from different areas. One will be someone who has been in the gaming business. Another is someone who has the government side, because he has worked in the town that had gaming. And the third is someone who is opposed to gaming and has been involved in different groups that advocate against gaming. So I believe it's a very well-set-up panel that provides all the different aspects of it. So it should be very interesting and allow people to find out what the information is that they need, so that they can make an informed decision about that. So I thank the EDC for their work on that. The other issue involves a marketing plan, which the EDC has also been doing a lot of work on this year, and I just want to read the press release that was given for this. "The Riverside Economic Development Commission and Point B Communications are working on the first phase of a marketing plan for the village, which involves brand positioning, logo development, and a style guide that will be used for instruction on how to visually represent the brand in 2016. Also included in the scope of this work is wayfinding signage for the central business district, which is one of the issues that have been talked about with CMAP, so this will allow us to address that issue. Point B Communications met with the EDC twice in January and was involved in a series of exercises to identify the personality of Riverside, its target audience, and its strengths and weaknesses relative to nearby communities. Point B and the EDC collaborated on preparing assets to be used in marketing the village, including statements on long-term, sustainable, competitive advantages, brand positioning, and brand manifesto, which is a declaration of purpose and intent. After the marketing statements are finalized, the next stage will be the concept development of a logo, and the EDC will be providing updates on the process through their website and Facebook page. They encourage people to attend either village meetings or follow the Economic Development Commission on the Facebook for additional insight." This has been a really big undertaking that the EDC has done, and it's been a very informative process. I know some people have seen the product that has come from Point B, and they have really done a good job of looking at what is Riverside, what is special about Riverside, and what can we use to market the village. And it's a very exciting process that they've gone through, and I'm very happy to see what they have done for us, so.
Thank you, trustee. And they are doing great work. The EDC is really firing on all cylinders these days, so I really appreciate all of their efforts. Anything else trustee-wise? We are going to have an update now from Director App on the streetscaping resurfacing. I'm sure everyone in town has seen that it has begun, so Ms. App can tell us what's in store.
Yes, as you probably all noticed, construction has begun for the Burlington Streetscaping Resurfacing Project. They have completed tree removal, curb removal, and some sidewalk removal on the south side of the street. The next phase is going to be installing conduit and utilities. Also, a small inconvenience for the next week, East Burlington Street is going to be closed starting tomorrow morning, Friday, March 18th, at 8:30 in the morning to 3:00 in the evening, or afternoon, I should say. This closure is going to be repeated next week, from Monday through Friday, so the second will be the 19th through the 20th, 20th through the 25th. 8:30 again to the 3:00 p.m., or between Cowley and Della Plane, construction is going to be happening in that area. Street's going to be closed, and traffic's going to be diverted to East Quincy. There will be posted detours. We'll reopen again in the late afternoon and the evenings. The street will remain open over the weekend, so you don't have to worry about the street closures over the weekend. This is just for through traffic. Local traffic will still be allowed through, so the residents that live in that area between Cowley and Della Plane will still be able to have access to their driveways and be able to get in and out. Anybody have any questions or any issues? They can certainly contact village offices, and we will try to address those.
Questions from the other? I just want to emphasize what she just said, that this closure is between Cowley and Della Plane. It is not in our downtown business district. All of our businesses are open. There's still sidewalk access to all of our businesses, and I can't emphasize enough to everyone how important it is that during this project this summer, that we shop local, that we make the effort, step over a little puddle if you have to, but let's support our businesses through what's going to be a trying few months. But the payoff is going to be enormous, so go downtown, help our businesses out.
If I may, I might also remind everybody that there is village parking lots available on Burlington, either next to Riverside Bank, or in the Green Parking Lot for available parking, since parking is closed on the south side of the street. So please use those lots, so that you can patron our businesses.
Thank you very much. I believe, actually, you can probably just stay up there, because you're next.
That's true.
Moving on now to ordinances and resolutions. First up is an ordinance amending the Village Riverside zoning ordinance relative to permitted encroachments on double-frontage lots. Ms. App?
Yes. During a recent review of a building permit, it was discovered that although there are exceptions allowing decks and fences to encroach into the street yard at the rear of a home for a double-frontage lot, there are no exceptions for any other structures in the rear yard. A double-frontage lot is a lot having frontages on two non-intersecting streets, so it's differentiated from a corner lot. The ordinance does not differentiate, though, for double-frontage lots the method for measuring street yards. Therefore, the required street yard setbacks for both the front and rear street yards of a double-frontage lot are from exactly where the house sits on the lot to the lot lines adjoining the streets. So therefore, any encroachments into the rear yard of a double-frontage lot are required to be treated as front yard encroachments. Staff is proposing a text amendment that would allow encroachments behind the house to be treated as rear yard encroachments. However, it would prevent any accessory structures from being placed in the yard adjacent to a front yard of an adjoining property. The proposed amendment includes a footnote that would be added to the front yard, corner side yard, and street yard column of Table 7. You have a copy of that before you. The footnote would read, pardon me, as follows. "In cases of double-frontage lots, the type of encroachment on the rear of the building shall be regulated as a rear yard encroachment. In no case, however, shall the rear yard encroachment on a double-frontage lot be allowed to extend into the street yard of the adjoining property if the front entrance of the principal structure on the adjoining property is located in the street yard opposite of the front entrance of the subject property." So if we have two houses, one facing east and one facing west, that are next to each other, the house facing east can't put anything any closer to the street behind it where the house is facing west to the street than that house currently is, so that there's no fence or pool, et cetera, in that adjacent front yard to that house. So additionally, staff is recommending a revision to Table 7 related to balconies, because adding the footnote would still prohibit a balcony deeper than two feet as an encroachment on the rear of the house on a double-frontage lot. The proposed text amendment would allow balconies to encroach five foot into a required rear yard. This change, combined with the footnote regarding double-frontage lots, would allow a maximum five-foot-deep balcony on the rear of a home on a double-frontage lot. The Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing on February 24th, reviewed the text amendment. They recommended approval of the text amendment. The Preservation Commission also reviewed the proposed text amendment. As you are aware, the Preservation Ordinance provides the Preservation Commission the opportunity to review any proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance for their effect on the village's landmark status or the village's general plan. The Preservation Commission reviewed this at a special meeting in March and determined that the proposed amendment would not have an adverse impact on the village's landmark status or the general plan of Riverside. You have before you an ordinance that has the language in there. You have the recommendations from the commissions, and I am here to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, can we first have a motion of the second to approve the ordinance?
Zoned.
Motion by Mr. Sedevy.
Second.
Second by Ms. Collins. Discussion questions. Clear on this? Please call the roll.
Trustee Bailey.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Lomston.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Sedevy. Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is an ordinance amending various sections of the Village of Riverside zoning ordinance relative to special and permitted use in commercial zoning districts. Ms. App?
Yes. The Village of Riverside's proposed certain text amendments to our zoning ordinance, to the Planning and Zoning Commission, related to business district uses and their definitions. The proposed text amendments are to Sections 10-5-9, which currently lists all the permitted and special uses in the business districts, and the village proposes to amend the classification of certain uses and to add new permitted and special uses. Staff's also proposed to amend Section 10-11-3, which defines uses, and 10-11-4, which defines other terms in the zoning ordinance. The village proposes to modify certain definitions to align with other village ordinances or state statutes, as well as create definitions for new uses. The definitions, uses, and related regulations to be amended or added include, but are not limited to, brew pubs, professional vocational schools, art or instruction studios, specialized instructional schools, tattoo parlors, currency exchanges, precious metal dealers, junk dealers. Staff in the village attorney have identified several uses that need to be clarified in the code, or changes to state regulations for certain business types that should be reflected in our zoning ordinance. Additionally, staff has received some inquiries from certain types of uses, such as drive-in schools, that do not currently fall with any use definition in the zoning ordinance. So our proposed changes will make some regulations more consistent, such as art studios, vocational schools, and restaurants. Address uses that currently would be categorized as personal service or retail sales, but are not necessarily preferred uses or deemed compatible with our downtown. These would include tattoo parlors, body piercing studios, junk dealers, or precious metal dealers. We've created new definitions for specialized instructional schools, tattoo parlors, and body piercing studios. Revised the definitions for art or instruction studio, professional vocational schools, personal service establishments, retail sales, and brew pubs. We've added tattoo parlors and body piercing studios as permitted uses in the B1-C district only. Removing these from the personal service definitions allows them then to be prohibited in our B2 central business district. We're also allowing specialized instructional schools as permitted uses in both the B1 and B2 zoning districts. We're adding junk dealers and precious metal dealers as permitted uses in the B1-C district only. Again, removing these from the retail sales definition allows them then to be prohibited in our downtown business district. We're also proposing to allow currency exchanges as a special use in the B1-C zoning district only. Currency exchanges are currently defined in the zoning ordinance separately from retail sales and financial institutions, however, they're not listed in either the B1 or B2 use tables. We're also proposing to prohibit pawnbrokers. The state statute allows municipalities to expressly prohibit pawnbrokers. Therefore, staff has added an explicit prohibition to the definition, and is also proposing to move that definition from other terms defined back into the uses-defined section. The planning and zoning, we'll start with preservation. The Preservation Commission did review the proposed text amendment, and they found that it did not have any adverse impact on the village's landmark status or general plan of Riverside. The Planning and Zoning Commission conducted the public hearing and reviewed the proposed text amendments. At the public hearing, there was a resident that spoke in opposition to the request. They expressed concerns about increasing the number of permitted uses in the mixed-use periphery of the B2 zoning district. They stated that this district was supposed to provide a buffer between the downtown and the residences, and allowing more uses in that district goes against that principle. They also specifically asked the Planning and Zoning Commission not to allow brew pubs in the B2 mixed-use periphery. Also, there was the owner of the Palest Driving School. He stated he is interested in opening a driving school in Harlem. However, he was informed that it's not a permitted use in town. Therefore, he asked the commission to approve the text amendment to allow for the driving schools as a permitted use. The Planning and Zoning Commission discussed the proposed definitions and uses at length, and recommended a few changes to staff's proposal. You have those proposed changes in the draft text amendment that you have before you, and I'll outline some of what those changes were. They asked that junk dealers be made a special use rather than a permitted use in the B1 district. They asked that a definition be provided that would specifically allow an artist to have their studio that is not related to teaching, but to their own art production, and asked that those be allowed as permitted uses in both of the commercial zoning districts. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that brew pubs be added as a special use in the mixed-use periphery. They also discussed restaurants in the mixed-use periphery. Although staff had recommended that restaurants without a drive-thru be reclassified as a permitted use, it's currently listed as a special use, we did that, we made that recommendation because restaurants with an outdoor café are already classified as a permitted use, and an outdoor café presumably would have more impact on adjacent neighbors than a restaurant without an outdoor café. The Planning and Zoning Commission, however, disagreed with staff, and a majority of the commission felt that since outdoor dining does have a significant impact on adjacent neighbors, it should be classified as a special use to provide the opportunity for greater scrutiny. Therefore, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that restaurants with outdoor cafes be revised from a permitted use to a special use in the mixed-use periphery, and that restaurants without a drive-thru remain as a special use. So either type of restaurant they're recommending would be a special use in the mixed-use periphery. The commission recommended approval of the text amendment with their recommended changes. You have a copy of their findings of fact before you. You have the ordinance before you, which incorporates their recommended changes. Can you answer any questions that you have?
Well, I suggest, since this is, there are a lot of moving parts that is here. Usually, we would have a motion of the second before we have discussion. I suggest we go through these page at a time, see if there are any questions about official things. Once we have a comprehensive thing, then we can make the motion. So why don't we start on page 123, Table 4? And Ms. App, just as a preface, can you tell us what the difference is between, in terms of the sub-districts, the B1-C and the B1-TC?
All right. The B1-C is our retail district for the B1. B1 is located along Harlem Avenue and Ogden Avenue. The B1-TC is our transitional commercial district, and those areas are like along Burlington as it leads into some of our residential areas. So they're supposed to provide that buffer between commercial uses and residential uses, and is more focused on lower-impact commercial uses, and is a little bit more restrictive than the B1-C district.
All the way down Burlington?
No, it doesn't go all the way down Burlington. I believe it goes to, almost to Della Plane.
So any questions about anything on page 123? Ms. App? Page 124? 125, there are no recommended changes. Page 126? It's okay with the recommendations there. Page 127?
I have a question on one item there. It's also under the definitions. I want to make sure I understand what we're doing with brew pubs. I think I do, but I just want to make sure everyone does. Currently, it's permitted only in the core, B2 core district, correct?
Correct.
And currently, under the definition, it has to include a restaurant. Is that correct?
The current definition does, yes.
So with the revised definition.
Mm-hmm.
It does not have to include food, restaurant. So, but we're leaving it So, but we're leaving it as a permitted use in the B2 and adding it as a special use in the, in the periphery, B2 periphery?
That's correct. The Planning and Zoning, staff had not recommended any change to the mixed-use periphery related to brew pubs. However, the Planning and Zoning Commission chose to add it as a special use, and I think a lot of the thinking around that was keeping it consistent with the restaurants. So a restaurant is a special use, outdoor seating would be a special use, and a brew pub would be a special use.
My question for the rest of the board is on leaving it as a permitted use in the B2 core district because I think that if you leave it that way and someone comes to us with a tavern that doesn't make its own beer, I think it'd be hard to make the argument that we don't allow, permit that also because the only difference is whether they're making it onsite or not. So in terms of public impact, both uses, I think one could argue they're similar. And so I think we need, we need to be conscious of that if we approve it this way, that maybe we're doing that.
I didn't mean to interrupt, sorry.
That's fine, go ahead.
Just to, 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 to forward on that, really, before we can talk about 127, page 127, whether it should be permitted or special, what we probably should talk about is this definitional change on page 128, because this is, this would be a substantial policy change from what our village has had for a long time. I just had one, one thought on this. You know, the brew pub slash microbrewery, that whole world is really exploding right now, as, as everybody knows. And I just wonder if it might not be a better idea at this point to leave the brew pub definition as it currently stands and have staff bring to us a, a new definition, a new classification of a microbrewery to distinguish between those two things. So that's just, that's just one thought that I had, but we have this in front of us, so we're welcome to talk about. It's been presented to us from the...
I agree with what you're saying, because when I reviewed the plant commission, one of the things that they were talking about is brew pub, when you're allowed to bring in, I mean, under our definition of brew pub, you're allowed to bring in other people's beers. And some of the commissioners were concerned about overindulgence as, as you could and being loud and boisterous and almost be a tavern-like atmosphere. And I think a craft brewery is different. A, they're, 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 they're much more sophisticated taste, and they're much more expensive beers, so you tend, you don't get the people going in and just consuming them one after another like you would if you had other, like a tavern-type of thing. So I agree that we should, we should split those two things out. I think that would be, be helpful. I would also like to, to, to also talk about the whole food issue. I don't think food necessarily drives a more legitimate business. And in some aspects, I, I think it actually hinders us from some, from some very cool, upscale businesses that, that couldn't work under our definitions. You know, I, I mean, I don't want to name taverns around us, but I don't know of a tavern around us that doesn't serve food. So the idea that food limits, a tavern coming into town is, is, is false because all, every, every tavern I know of has food. But what it does limit in, I was in New Orleans a couple of weeks ago, and one of the places that my wife and I visited was this, this great wine and cheese bar, very high-end, extremely knowledgeable staff on cheeses and charcuterie, and, which is dried meats. And you can order a pallet of, of these things, and they would help you pair it with some, with some wines. It was not in an expensive endeavor. It was very, very nice, but that could not come into our town, under our current codes. So I, I think actually this food issue is more limiting to, to the chance of us attracting some higher-end type of establishments than it is deterring, and I don't mean to say this, oh, the tavern, but I don't, I don't think they're lower-end established, but, but I think that was the reason that was there at the first time. So I would like to, to investigate that option also.
Well, with that in mind, one thing we could do is we could, we could pull, just leave the brew pub the way it is for right now and have this broader discussion at our, our meeting in April, where we, where we could, we could take a look at a microbrewery definition. We could address head-on this whole question about whether we want to relax or change the, how we treat food in our establishments. Is that agreeable to everyone here?
Yeah, I, I think the other thing to consider in brew pub versus microbrewery, and I'm, I, I think that some brew pubs or microbreweries would like to serve wine, which may probably not be, wouldn't be made onsite, so we should consider allowing that as an option as well.
What do you guys think? Pull it through.
You know, I gotta tell, I, every, I don't, you know, every craft distillery, craft brewery that I've been to, and I've been, there's, there's quite a few of them up where, where we have a cabin, and there's actually quite a few around here. I've never been to one that has anything other than what they produce, whether it be other beers, other wines, even hard liquor. So I don't know if that, I, I see what you're saying, and I, and I, I just, I don't know if that actually, that actually works in, in theory. I don't, I, I've never seen a, a actual craft distillery sell something else. I've, I've seen them use, there's a craft distillery in Michigan, that, there's Journeyman Distillery, which is very similar to Derek's, the, the distillery we have on Quincy, what's the?
Quincy Street.
Quincy Street Distillery. They'll take their barrels, Journeyman's Bourbon barrels, and make their beer in it and do it as a limited release, and they do stuff like that. But I think when you add the wine and the other liquors, I think that would fall more towards the, that brew pub classic class where, you know, you're, you're making your own, plus you add the, the wine and stuff, and then that may be falling where you allow or disallow those in certain areas, because they have the tendency of causing, you know, could cause more of a disruption with neighbors.
Let me, let me ask you this. If, if for right now, we're going to leave the brew pub definition as it is, which would be a full-service restaurant that also serves alcoholic beverages, et cetera, do you want to go ahead tonight and make a decision about whether we would want something like that to be a permitted or special use in the mixed-use periphery? Or would you like to hold that decision off until we have this other discussion?
I would like to get it all together at one time.
So just leave, okay. Is that, is that agreeable to everybody? So with the exception of, on page 27, the special use recommendation for brew pubs and leaving the brew pub definition as it stands and not making any changes to that, are there any comments or questions about the new definitions on pages 128 and 129? The only other, if I recall, from the Planning and Zoning, the only disagreements there were, were with regard to the junk dealer, whether that should be permitted or special use. So everybody's fine with it being a special use, I take it. And the other change recommended by the Planning and Zoning is on page 126, the restaurant with outdoor café. They wanted that to be a special use in line with a restaurant with a drive-through, so I take it everyone is in agreement with those things. Okay. So with the exception of the special use recommendation on 127 and not, not doing any changes to the brew pub definition at this point, I would ask for a motion and a second to approve the remaining ordinance changes.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the changes as amended.
A motion by Mr. Pollak.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballerine. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Longston.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. App. We have no considerations or new business this evening. We do have need for an executive session tonight to discuss the acquisition of real property. No final decisions will be made. We will not reconvene, so I would ask for a motion to adjourn to executive session. Motion by Ms. Collins. Second by Mr. Longston. Please call the roll.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Longston.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Meeting is adjourned. Have a safe night, everyone.